I will call to order, this is the regularly scheduled November tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the East Lansing Board of Education.
No, she threw out a say. Thank you, Miss, for my one dollar massage.
Nope, we are not.
Uh, Ms. Hope, can we get her roll call?
You're done, please.
Grab that gavel press.
Should I get the gavel out?
Yes.
Oh, we have to share this.
We are out of orders.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Lyons.
Here.
Trustee Edsel.
Here.
Trustee Ferris Highland.
Here.
Trustee Chambers.
Present.
Trustee Torres. Trustee Taikaki.
Here.
Student Representative Dejaka.
Here.
And Student Representative Megya.
Here.
And Superintendent Legel.
Here.
Trustee Torres is excused. She was in touch with me yesterday anticipating that she wouldn't be able to make it today. So, um, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Trustee Edsel, can you read our mission statement?
Oh, where did I put that? I should not need notes, but our mission statement is nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda of the November tenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Trustee Ferris Highland, seconded by Trustee Chambers. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition. The motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion for the approval of minutes?
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the following meeting as presented. One, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Lyons, seconded by Trustee Chambers. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
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 In the opposition. The motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is recognition. Trustee Ferris Highland.
I don't have any tonight, but I know our students will, so that's great.
So let's move along to the student. Oh, do any other board members wish to recognize anyone?
Are you gonna at all discuss your trip up north for Nikki and Ray?
I thought I did.
Did you, I think beforehand that you were going to talk about it.
Maybe. I think I did at a meeting, but I will just say, yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. Yesterday, the Michigan High School Coaches Association recognized our athletic director, Nikki Norris, as Athletic Director of the Year, and recognized our boys' basketball coach, Ray Mitchell, as Boys Basketball Coach of the Year up at a luncheon award ceremony in Midland. So yes, Nikki was there and able to attend, and got a nice award, and it was actually a really, it was a really cool event, because it was one, uh, one coach recognized for each sport in the state of Michigan, and so there were some, um, a few that were some really cool, touching stories about why they were selected. So, Principal Ashley Schwartzback, Assistant Principal Jeff Lampy, and I made the trip up yesterday to see Nikki get her award.
All right, we'll move on to the student representative report.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, so this is our report, and, um, I guess we just wanted to acknowledge that right now is kind of like a in-between period, like, fall sports are over, and it's kind of winter sports haven't really started yet. Like, we haven't even had tryouts for most sports, so I think it's really just a little bit of an awkward time, I think. But, Tonya, do you wanna start it off?
Yeah, so, um, our fall play, Almost Maine, is opening this week with showings from Thursday through Sunday, and it's basically just like a collection of short stories about, like, love and life in, like, some small town, and we all know that the cast and crew has been working very hard for it.
Um, the Buckthorn event, which was, I think, NHS main event, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, took place this past Saturday and was a big success. It provided, like, a lot of, like, opportunities for students at the high school to, you know, get in their main events for NHS and to volunteer. We wanted to say thank you to everyone who helped out and participated.
And then we're also, this is kind of big, way big news, but, um, we're continuing our annual turkey drive. So, like, first hour classes are gonna be accepting donations through the twenty-first, and students can basically just drop off, like, whatever food or money to their first hour, and there's also a little more incentive, because whoever, like, donates the most gets a donut party on the last day. So, all the donations are gonna go towards helping local families in need this holiday season, and I think it's something that's, like, pretty serious, and I think it's gonna be very successful, too.
Yeah, um, on that, I think it also, um, should be mentioned that it, like, there's a lot of opportunities for students to, through NHS, to volunteer with this event. Like, people are bringing in, you know, boxes to contribute. People are, like, helping put together the boxes, like, putting up flyers, so there's a lot, um, going on with that. Um, right now, like I said, we're in, like, this transitional period for winter sports, so there's a lot of preseason conditioning, and some tryouts are underway, um, and fall sports are, like, wrapping up with, um, banquets and celebration. Like, I think Marchy Band had their banquet last week, so, you know, it's just kind of wrapping up.
And we also have some very exciting news to look forward to. A group of seven students, including me, will be attending the Empstand Conference in Arlington, Virginia, and Washington, DC. So we're gone this week from the twelfth through the fifteenth, and I'm sure we're gonna come back with lots of news about all the amazing things that happens over there.
And finally, we're just about two weeks away from Thanksgiving break, so we get a week, um, this year, which is really nice, and I know everyone is really looking forward to it, so, um, students and staff are working hard to finish strong before the holiday. Thank you.
That's all we have. Thank you.
In regards to making donations, who would checks be made out to, and/or is there a Venmo or a cash app?
So I believe it's only cash, and then there's, so each of us, like, in each of our classes-
No, Miss Seka has a Venmo.
Oh, well-
I'll send it to you.
But then, yeah, so, um, students can, like, drop off specific items, too, after their first hour classes, but then they also take cash, and then now, Miss Seka's Venmo.
Yeah, like, there's a Venmo, I think, too. I wouldn't really know how to get it, but I think-
Charlie's gonna share it with me, but I just, if we can get that out to the community as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be, yeah, that's a really great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Every first hour, you said, right?
Yeah, every first hour, including, like, even, like, the online classes.
The online classes, too.
Yeah, so it's very accessible. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Thank you. Uh, I wanna talk a little bit about the opening of the East Lansing Public Schools Health Center. It is near. Uh, the Health Center team is very excited to meet everyone. There are just a few finishing touches left to complete before they're ready to open. Um, we are actually expecting the inspector to, um, be here this Friday, so we should have some news hopefully next week. In the meantime, please check out the Health Center's webpage, which I'll have linked here, uh, to learn more and about how they'll be able to support your child and family, and if you haven't already, feel free to complete the consent form, which is also linked here in these notes, and return it to your child's teacher, or deliver it to the Health Center directly. If you have any questions about future care, you can reach this Health Center, um, and the phone number is listed here, and keep your eyes on our page, um, for future updates, including an opening date. That will also be on our webpage, and we'll get it out on our social media. Um, a little bit more, some local resources for families. Uh, we recognize that some of our families may be experiencing hardship or additional need during this time of the government shutdown. So there's a couple things, um, that will be in the superintendent's report going out tomorrow. Um, one is a link of local resources for families. It's a very comprehensive link that helps, uh, families who may, uh, have not just food needs, but shelter, care, um, mental health services, a whole variety of different types of needs that, um, and this is local Lansing resources. And then, to supplement, what, what we've kind of found out last week was that many of the schools are doing, um, food drives or Thanksgiving, um, collections for, like, Thanksgiving meals, but what we're recognizing is that because our kids have no school all of Thanksgiving Week, um, many of our students and their families rely on the free breakfasts and lunches provided at our buildings. So we are kind of taking a little spin on the weekend survival kits that kids take home, um, to supplement their meals at home, and we're gonna do Thanksgiving Week Survival Kits to distribute to families during this extended time away from school. There's two ways people can, um, help collect items for our Thanksgiving Week Survival Kits. Uh, we have an Amazon wishlist, and this link will go out tomorrow, or if folks don't utilize or don't, um, use Amazon, we can also do Venmo, and we're really focusing these items to be, um, kid-friendly, that kids can make, prepare themselves, uh, like in the microwave, like, cereal cups with milk, oatmeal cups, granola bars, um, yes, some Pop-Tarts, and then some lunch items and snacks. So we're focusing this drive, not on, like, the big Thanksgiving or holiday meals. We're trying to supplement, um, meals that families may, uh, just need some support with while the kids are at home. So, we'll collect the items and funds through next Monday, and then, based on what we have, we'll communicate, uh, ways for families to request or pick up these Thanksgiving Week Survival Kits, um, early next week, once we know what we have to contribute, distribute, sorry. Um, any questions on that? Great.
Sounds like a big project.
It does, but it'll be, it'll be great for our community, and, you know, we have had people asking, you know, what they can do, and I know our buildings are doing a lot for the holiday meals, but I think this will be a great way to provide kids who may be home, um, while parents are still working and being able to get their, um, prepare something for breakfast and lunch. Uh, I thought this was a little early to bring out, but based on the weather this weekend, it's not. I looked last year, I didn't even, uh, share this till December, but school closing procedures for winter weather events, it's time. As we enter snow day season, I'd like to share some information about how the decision of whether or not to close school is made, and how a school closing will be communicated. Uh, number one, many weather factors are considered when determining whether or not to close school. The amount of snow and/or ice, both current and predicted, timing of snow and/or ice, a temperature and wind chill, sustained wind chills of negative twenty degrees or lower will result in school closing or delay, road and sidewalk conditions specifically for our walkers and our young drivers, uh, whether or not wind may be causing, may cause blowing and drifting, and other factors such as visibility and power outages. So I complete a road check throughout the district beginning around four fifteen AM and communicate with other local superintendents, and sometimes the City of East Lansing and/or ELPD. When possible, we will make the decision the night before in order to give families as much time as possible to prepare for a school closing. If a decision to close schools is made the night before, it will be communicated no later than ten PM. If the decision to close school is made in the morning, we will do our best to communicate by five thirty AM and no later than six, pending any new information that would require a later close. Uh, if a decision is made to close school, the closing is communicated to staff and families via the following methods. Uh, families and staff will get a robocall and a text if you have that feature turned on. Uh, this is a reminder to make sure your phone number is current and powers school, because those are the numbers that get pulled for these robocalls and texts. Uh, the ELPS Facebook page and other official ELPS social media, uh, our ELPS website, the main page, and then local TV stations, WILX, WLNS, and Fox forty-seven. And then, information about other events that are later in the day, like practices, games, concerts, et cetera, will be made by one PM and communicated through coaches and advisors and/or the district website. And then I've linked our social media on here again, and added some important dates coming up again. Uh, no school Thanksgiving Week, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. Uh, Friday, December twelfth, is a Staff Professional Learning Day, so there is no school for students on Friday, December twelfth, and winter break is December twenty-second through January second. And that is all I have today.
Um, I wanted to share one other resource. Um, it's just findhelp.org, and you type in your zip code, and you can get connected to, they may be duplicates of what you shared, but it's just a pretty easy one to remember, findhelp.org, and then type in your zip code for food and housing resources.
Thank you.
I have not used it, but it had been shared with me, so-
Okay.
Thought I'd pass it on.
Yeah, I'll be happy to add that in. Thank you.
And I, um, I think that the weekend survival kits, even though it's a nine-day survival kit, is, um, is a terrific idea, and, um, I noticed that you put the wishlist and, uh, just a Venmo link. Do you have, like, do you have any preference as to how people contribute, or is-
Either one of those ways. If they go on the wishlist, it'll get automatically delivered here, so we've got it set up so that Amazon, any of the items will be delivered right here. Um, it's prob, I mean, that would be easiest. The Venmo, we're gonna turn around and go purchase items for it anyway, so, I mean, that would be the preference, but I know some folks don't utilize that, so I wanted to just give a couple options.
So, cut out the middleman, go to the Amazon wishlist, and that'll be distributed, it all come here, and then it'll go to the different buildings?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, and we'll find, uh, we'll, we're gonna see what we have, and then we'll determine the best way and communicate with our principals about how best to get it in the hands of the families who need it, because we could also imagine sending these bags of really cool treats home with kids on the bus, and that they might not make them home. So, um, we gotta, yeah, might get a little creative with how we make sure these get home.
My children aren't the only ones that would eat an entire box of Pop-Tarts in a bus ride.
Those kids could be very popular on the bus.
Well, there's that, too.
So, we may, uh, even kind of brainstorming, thinking about running a little, you know, drive-through pickup, even, like, uh, back in the, don't speak about COVID times, right? But, uh, a little drive-through pickup for these, too, we could.
Is there any volunteerism needed to, like, put the kits together before they get?
Probably early next week. I'll, uh, share it with all of you in case you're available.
Okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, yeah, it's an exciting time, but also it's a good reminder that this is a way we can help out, so. Any other questions for the superintendent before we move on? All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding our sex education curriculum. We have Ms. Scott here. Um, so I'll, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This is, um, a public hearing for the recommendation of Rights, Respect, and Responsibility, which is a Michigan-aligned high school lessons dated two thousand twenty-three to replace the Michigan Model for Health entitled Healthy and Responsible Relationships: HIV, Other STIs, and Pregnancy Prevention for High School Health Classrooms, Grade Nine to Twelve. So I'll bring up Ms. Scott, and, uh, I'll let her take it away.
Great, well, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Um, I did prepare a presentation, which I'll go through for your benefit and anyone who's following along at home, so, um, again, my name is Ann Scott. I serve as the Sex Education Supervisor for the District, so, um, I'll just walk through the presentation real briefly. Um, just to start, just a little level-setting about how HIV/STI education and sex education works for Michigan school districts. Um, every Michigan school district is required to provide HIV education at least once at every building level, so elementary, middle, and high school, um, and it is optional to provide sexual health education in addition to that HIV education. Um, and East Lansing is a district that has opted to provide that education, um, but we must follow the law pertaining to content and process, um, and that includes having our Sex Education Advisory Board, and we have a fabulous board of parents and, and other local health professionals that serve on that, um, as well as having someone who sits in my seat as the Sex Education Supervisor, um, that makes sure the materials and methods are all happening in accordance with state law and is, uh, in accordance with our district policies. Um, also important to know that for all sex education and HIV education instruction, parents or guardians and caregivers have the right to review the information, the content prior to instruction, review those materials in advance. Um, they have the right to observe instruction, and they also have the right to excuse their child without penalty. So, um, parents of the district might get emails from me when it's time for fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, or high school, um, education time, and we go through that process. Um, just real quickly about the Sex Education Advisory Board. Um, so again, according to state law, every district that chooses to implement sex education needs to have a sex ed advisory board, um, and that is comprised of parents, students, um, educators, local clergy, and community health professionals, and at least half of that board must be parents of students in the district. And we're really fortunate in East Lansing that, um, everyone on our sex education board, aside from our students, are also parents in the district, so they wear both hats, which is a great thing to have. Um, and the Sex Ed Advisory Board, again, their charge is really to establish the goals and objectives for knowledge and learning that we wanna have in our programs, review and recommend materials, which is what we're doing tonight, um, and of course evaluating and measuring how we're doing towards our goals with the instruction that we're providing. And I also put our mission for our East Lansing Sex Ed Advisory Board, um, on that slide as well, um, lifting up that we're looking for effective, age-appropriate sexuality education that teaches respect for self, others, safety, health, um, healthy life skills, and that we do that in partnership with families and the community. On the next slide there, because you'll hear me reference this frequently, the Michigan A- through K standards. So, um, as I mentioned, state law says that districts that are providing education need to, um, align with, uh, state standards in terms of content, so these are those standards. They're called A- through K because that's just how they're listed, um, in our health standards. Um, and so as I refer to those, that's what I'm talking about, is those are the standards that we're looking for. So, um, on the next page, um, I listed what we're currently doing for HIV/STI, um, education in terms of the core curriculums that we're using. So four through six, we're using Puberty of the Wonder Years, seventh through eighth, and ninth, um, and ninth through twelve, so high school, we use the Michigan Model Curriculum. And so, I've been in this role now, I think this is my third year, um, and when I first came on, immediately I started to get some feedback from both students and, and teachers, um, that with the Michigan Model Curriculum that they were currently using, there were some challenges, one being it wasn't up-to-date, so the Michigan Model, um, did just undergo some updates this summer, but prior to that had not had any updates for some time, um, I think it was almost a decade. Um, and a lot has changed in a decade in terms of the kind of digital environment our students are in, um, as well as a lot has changed, frankly, in HIV prevention and treatment that wasn't there. So we've done a lot of supplemental approvals, um, but that also becomes challenging for educators, because they have their core curriculum, and then they have a lot of, like, add-ons that they need to incorporate and still keep that flow to their instruction, um, and also they were working out of paper binders, and so they were really interested in having an online curriculum that would keep all the presentations, the handouts, everything in a more, uh, manageable space. So that was sort of our charge. So last year, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, uh, we pulled together a committee. Um, the committee included members of the SEAB, as well as some educators and other district staff, uh, to guide that process. We went through, uh, searching quite a few curriculums. We used some criteria of, we were looking for things that were more recently updated within the last two to three years, um, that it was inclusive, comprehensive, abstinence-based. Uh, the Eaton Risa gives a great curriculum guide that helped us sort of narrow down, uh, of course aligned with our Michigan A- through K standards and state law, um, looking for digitally accessible and was educator-friendly in terms of how lesson plans were laid out, et cetera, and the resources associated and materials with the lessons were, uh, available to educators. Um, and then cost and affordability was another factor. Um, and so we narrowed it down to three curriculums. We did a deep curriculum review of three curriculums, um, and out of those, that review process, we elevated the Rights, Respect, and Responsibility Curriculum, uh, which is published by Advocates for Youth. Um, it's a national curriculum. On the next slide, it kind of gives you an overview of kind of the, um, principles of the, the curriculum and the materials they developed. Again, very focused on the right to honest sexual health information for youth, um, that youth deserve respect and deserve, um, you know, to be able to treat others with respect, um, in terms of things that affect their health and well-being, and that society has a responsibility to make sure young people have the tools they need to safeguard their health, um, and that young people have a responsibility to protect themselves. And so we piloted a sampling of lessons. I should back up and say, we initially were trying to see if this would be a fit for seventh, eighth, as well as ninth through twelfth. Uh, we selected a set of lessons that we piloted at the end of last year, and out of that pilot, we determined that really this was a great fit, we thought, for ninth through twelfth, not so much for seventh and eighth. So we have another process. We're back on the hunt, looking for a seventh and eighth replacement, um, but what we're recommending tonight is for ninth through twelfth for our high school. Um, just a couple of the characteristics. Um, the content, um, covers things like consent, boundaries, anatomy, healthy relationships, um, all the STI, HIV, pregnancy prevention, um, core concepts we would expect. It also includes material on safe online interactions, which is an important update, given the environmental, many of our young people are operating in, um, as well as growth and development. Um, and the other thing that we really liked, or the SEAB and the review committee really liked about this, was, um, it's very interactive and focused on skill development, and so that's critically important, because we want young people to have the opportunity to practice skills like communication, refusal skills, decision-making, um, analyzing choices or information they might be receiving, because when they're in the moment in their life where they need to implement those skills, we want them to be comfortable and be practiced. All right, and then the next slide gives you an overview of the content for the Michigan-aligned high school version of Rights, Respect, and Responsibility. Uh, there's thirteen lessons, which covers, um, you can kind of see those themes kind of reflected in those thirteen lessons. There's also four supplemental lessons, so what we're recommending tonight is all thirteen plus those four supplemental lessons. And then just, I mentioned Michigan-aligned, so this was another feature we very much appreciated about this curriculum, which is, um, it is a national curriculum, but they have actually produced tailored versions of it specific to state, uh, regulations and standards. So there is a Michigan-specific version, so that's what we're recommending here. Um, what's really nice about that is that sometimes you get a curriculum, and then we, as a district, have to, like, cruise through it and make sure that we think it aligns with A- through K standards and meets state law. It's nice to have a curriculum where that work has kind of already been done by the professionals that produce it, um, and then we're just really reviewing for fit and content, um, for our district. So, um, so that's sort of the nuts and bolts there. So the version that we're recommending is the Michigan-adapted version, which meets all of our state laws, aligns with our A- through K standards, um, and it also features in its teacher guide some specific contours, so the teacher guide is also, um, matched up for our state. Um, and this last one, I forgot to update, since we did our community meeting, but I guess I'll say that. Um, the process for how we approve curriculum, um, as I mentioned, we got our committee together, uh, we reviewed curriculum. Um, from that, we identified at least one curriculum we wanted to pilot. That was the Rights, Respect, Responsibility. We ran the pilot. We made an assessment at the Sex Education Advisory Board, uh, based on the feedback from that pilot. We did just conduct a community meeting last Tuesday, gosh, last week, November fifth. Was that Wednesday? It was Wednesday. So we had a community presentation, so we had a handful of parents come out to check out the curriculum, review it, ask questions, um, and so that was a great feedback, and largely kind of confirmed that parents were largely supportive of what we were putting forward as a recommendation. Um, so now we're at the process, uh, point in the process here where, uh, we're holding our first, uh, hearing, and so look forward to collecting more feedback, um, and, and questions, and anything else I can do to help with the process of, uh, this last leg of the review process. So I think that concludes the presentation, and any questions you have, I'm happy to take.
Are there any questions for Ms. Scott?
I do have one question.
Yes.
Not related to this curriculum, but, um, in looking at the middle school curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
How hard do you think it will be, given that our teachers don't have certification?
It actually, um, so I mentioned that Michigan Model did do some updates this summer, and actually the middle school, the seventh, eighth curriculum, they did do some pretty significant updates for that set, um, and that is HIV/STI-focused, which is why, because they don't have a health certification, they can teach the HIV/STI portion, just not the broader sexual health education. Um, so I'm, we're just starting on the Sex Ed Advisory Board. We just put together a committee to look at those updates, um, and see if that'll be a good replacement, and that will account for the fact that we don't have health-certified teachers at seventh and eighth.
Okay, thank you.
I have a kind of selfish question, but, um, I'm talking to my son tonight at dinner about what was on the agenda for tonight, and I mentioned this. He said, "Why do we have to learn sex ed in school? Why can't you teach it to me?" Are there, uh, resources available for parents to amplify what's being taught at school?
Absolutely, yeah. So, um, so a couple of things. So the curriculum itself also kind of provides some, um, you know, worksheets. I know our, our four through six curriculum is pretty heavy with that. It always has, like, take-home work that is intended to engage students in conversation with their parents. Um, we also, the Sex Ed Advisory Board has also put together a great list of resources. Um, one of our board members worked with the East Lansing Public Library to get, like, an entire book and reading list together that we can share out with parents, so, um, we try to make sure we make resources available for parents, so they're ready for that. Um, and when we do our parent information nights, that's another thing we talk about, is that your kids will be coming home with questions, and so you wanna make sure you're prepared, too, so that you are ready for those conversations.
Thank you.
Yeah. On that line, I know last year you put together some-
On that line, I know last year, you put together some separate workshops at night on gender and then.
Yes.
Dr. Megan Moss did the awesome one on online pornography and all of that. Super beneficial. Are you planning more of those in 2026?
Yeah, we're planning to do another community education event in the spring. So, and I, no spoiler alert, but I suspect it might be Dr. Megan Moss again, because that was very well-received and really good information.
Great.
Great.
Any other questions for Ms. Scott? Well, thank you for all that you do. I know this is, it's a, it's a big commitment and you're doing great work. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
As, as Ms. Scott alluded to, state law requires us to have two separate public comment sections when we change anything about the Sex Ed curriculum. So, now is the time for public comment. Ms. Hoecore, have we had any requests for public comment on this? All right. Don't see any requests for public comment. So, with that, I'm going to close this public hearing. So, we'll close this portion of the meeting. There will be another opportunity for folks who want to weigh in on this, if that's something that anyone's interested in doing. That'll be at our next meeting, the second phase of the public comment.
Yes, yes, December.
December 8th.
8th, thank you.
All right. Now is another opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment more broadly beyond the topics we were just discussing? I don't believe there is. There's no public comment. Okay, so we'll move on to board discussion. I place an item on the agenda for board discussion, which I think may be a bit premature at this time. We will be moving our regular meetings to our new administration building sometime after the first of the year. And so, I wanted to have some conversations about what that's going to look like, but also how we might engage with the work happening in our buildings as well when we're kind of separate. One of the neat things about being at the high school and the middle school is that we're in the community. I think that's a conversation that we should have, but I am willing to postpone that conversation for a few weeks if we think that's wise. I don't know what other, what other board members want to, if any other board members have thoughts about that.
I think this just came up in facilities, right? So, we thought it'd be a good future board discussion, but I'm open to tabling it until, you know.
I'd recommend also that maybe it'd be a topic at Academic and Tech where Christian is present, so he can explain the technology. Because there is a reason we are here for all of these meetings, because when we knew we weren't going to be able to use the high school at the end of August, that boardroom, we talked about rotating those meetings around to buildings, but we talked to Christian about that. And there's some, I mean, we're recording and placing these meetings online, but we're not able to stream as the setup we have right here right now. So, we're not streaming it. That would also likely be the case if we kept kind of bopping around and not having it set up. So, I think getting Christian's input, maybe at Academic and Tech and bringing it back for consideration as part of the larger discussion would be worthwhile, because I probably can't quite do it justice.
Do we have an updated date on the new building?
We have, right now, furniture is slated to come the second week of December. So, it's unlikely we'll have our December 8th meeting in there, but we should be in there for January.
Excellent.
And we often have an organizational meeting in January where we talk about meetings. And so, when we have the meeting where we talk about meetings, that might be a good, good time to do it.
I love meeting about meetings.
Yeah. So, but I, that's something we can also discuss at Academic and Tech. I think that's a fabulous idea. All right. Any other topics for board discussion before we move on? All right. Let's move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda, there's a recommendation for a closed session. So, can I get a motion on that?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the legal counsel regarding privileged attorney-client communications and legal advice concerning school state aid, Section 31AA.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Edsel, seconded by Trustee Taikaki. Motion for closed session requires a roll call vote. So, Ms. Hoecore.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Lyons?
Yes.
Trustee Edsel?
Yes.
Trustee Ferris Highland?
Yes.
Trustee Chambers?
Yes.
And Trustee Taikaki?
Yes.
All right. So, I don't know if this is going to be a terribly long closed session, but we are going to speak about some legal matters. So, if you are in the audience, we ask that you go to the hallway for a few moments and we will open the doors and let everybody back in once the closed session period is over. So, thank you. All right, we're back in open session. Thank you to everyone for being patient during the, the closed session discussion. It went longer than we expected. So, now, we're back on the official record. We can move on to action items. And the first item on that list is this School Aid Act, Section 31AA funding. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to amend State School Aid Section 31AA, MCL 388.1631AA, to allocate funding for fiscal year 2025-26 to support school safety and student mental health initiatives as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Trustee Edsel, seconded by Trustee Ferris Highland. Does anybody want to make any public remarks about this? I can interject, I can say a few things. I think that, I think it's probably unconstitutional for the state legislature to ask the Board of Education and the school district to do this. I am an attorney, but I'm not that kind of attorney. So, I don't deal with these constitutional issues every day. But what they're asking us to do implicates the state constitution of 1963. It implicates the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the U.S. Constitution. Effectively, what they're asking is that if we want to accept money to pay for safety, security, mental health supports in our buildings, then we have to waive our rights as a district to attorney-client privilege, which is kind of a novel approach to these kinds of things. And in my opinion, not legal or constitutional, but I guess it's legal if they say it is until a judge says it's not. They put us in a hard position where there, this could, for our district, mean half a million dollars or more. And so, we're in this, this position where we have to decide, do we take the money? And if we take the money, we put, we could, in theory, put people in the district at risk in the future. So, it's, it is, that was largely what we were discussing. And I can't get into the particulars of the closed session, but that's the, the tenor of the discussions. And I, you know, I cannot in good conscience say that we're not going to accept money to support mental health in our buildings. And I cannot in good conscience tell our superintendent to lay people off they've already hired to do this work. And so, this is the position that we're in as a board right now.
I agree, Chris. I think it's lose-lose. We're putting people at risk either way. And the number of times, just since I've joined this board in January, that I have had the opportunity to say to myself, "Thank goodness, we have those mental health and safety teams in place. I don't know what we would have done if they weren't there." Makes it even harder.
There was a lot to hate about this and the situation and position that we're put in, not the least of which is the process that this comes through and the lack of transparency that this legislator has, legislation has undertaken to have this happen. And I just, I resent being put in this position.
Are we prepared to move to a vote on this?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
So, the record reflect five ayes, one no. The next item is Action Item B, Power School Litigation Resolution.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution related to the Power School litigation as presented.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Taikaki, seconded by Trustee Chambers. Is there any discussion on this action item? All right. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. The next item is Action Item C, Sex Education Guest Speaker from the Lansing Women's Center, Empowering Youth Workshop, Understanding Consent for Dating and Life.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Lansing Women's Center's Empowering Youth Workshop series, Understanding Consent for Dating and Life, facilitated by Dr. Samantha Baye as the guest sex education speaker for students in grades six through 12.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Edsel and seconded by Trustee Taikaki. Is there any discussion on this action item?
Yes, I would like to say something. I would like to say how excited I was to read this and really in support of educating our students on consent. I don't know if everyone on this board knows, but I, for the past two years, have been volunteering as a crisis advocate for the MSU Center for Survivors, which means I get dispatched to residence halls and to the sexual assault healthcare program to serve as an advocate for survivors and help them begin the process of processing what has happened to them. And I actually just came out of a, a meeting of all the crisis advocates right before arriving here, which is a monthly opportunity for us to share out the experiences and lessons learned as we've met with survivors. And every single time I'm dispatched and every single story I hear from other advocates is how much we have to do myth-busting, how much the victims, the survivors blame themselves, and how much they don't understand that their consent has been violated. In every single one of these situations, it's critical that we start educating students on this as early as possible, and I strongly support this.
Well said. Well said.
Is there any other discussion on this action item? All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. The next action item is Action Item D, Sex Education Guest Speaker, Lansing Area AIDS Network Presentation on Gender and Sexuality.
I move that the Board of Education approve the addition of gender and sexuality, presented by Katie Tricky as a sex education guest speaker for students in grades nine through 12.
Second.
Motion is made by Trustee Edsel, seconded by Trustee Chambers. Is there any discussion on this action item? All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. We have, first up, Academic and Technology, Trustee Lyons?
No report, other than we have a meeting December 1st at noon in the hub.
December 1st at noon. Facilities Committee, Trustee Ferris Highland?
We met last week, got updates from Nikki on fall sports and Billy on fall maintenance. We, they had a great fall sports season and all fall maintenance has been completed. Hot water heaters are gonna be, go in over Thanksgiving break. We're gonna have an upcoming proposal for a boiler, two at the high school coming our way, and bids for an athletic activities sprinter van is gonna come our way soon to help with transportation for smaller activity and sports groups. So, that was, that's exciting. And as far as athletics, the MMS sports being in-house now versus the city has been going really great. Nikki has still been transitioning Mr. White, and he's done an excellent job. So, that transition has went well, as expected. And we don't have another meeting set, but we're gonna meet after the New Year.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Ferris Highland. Finance Committee, Trustee Edsel.
I left my notes on the counter, so I'm reading off of a picture. The biggest discussion was the Section 31AA that we just passed a resolution on. The tuition weights have been set for non-resident pupils. That was in everyone's items of information for tonight, and will get voted on at our next meeting. Some brief discussion about the Board of Water and Light Settlement, which in total will be about $300,000. Most of that has already come in so far. And Comerica has been our long-term banking partner. And it looks like there is in the works, fifth-thirds to acquire Comerica. It has not been approved yet, but that's just something we need to keep an eye on down the line, you know, just require redoing all the signatures and, and et cetera. So, that was pretty much it on, it was a very short finance meeting.
I've always thought that fifth-third is a confusing name for a bank.
Yeah.
Not the fourth.
An improper fraction, it just doesn't.
Oh, my gosh. This is not a sentence I have ever heard in my life.
Intergovernmental Relations, Trustee Torres is not here tonight. Does anybody, is there any updates from Intergovernmental?
We did meet and, oh, gosh, when did we meet?
The 29th.
Yeah. And we had some, who was it? Mark Meadows came from the city, had some good discussion, agreed that we'll meet again in the New Year to come together and have a bigger meeting with our, our two boards and have more discussion. Was there something else that we talked about?
Library. Is there anything on the library topic?
Library. Yes, but I don't.
The city manager is gonna follow up with the library on existing program. And we're in convers, will be in conversation with the library board prior to the school year. That's what's in our minds.
Okay.
I don't have all the notes. She sent them, but I don't have them on my phone.
That's, that's, that's more than, more than enough. Policy, personnel, there's no updates. Policy Committee, Trustee Edsel?
Yeah, we actually had a very busy policy meeting. What is the title of Policy 55, 54 or 5 that went to the principals? It, it has to do with.
Parent Engagement Plan.
For the.
Title one.
Title one, okay. So, it's a policy regarding the Parent Engagement Plan for Title One. So, it, the, the actual Title One schools, Red Cedar, Donley, and Green, had to kind of work together to add items into that policy. Dory's in the review process of their additions. And I believe it was in items of information tonight.
It's coming.
Yes. No, didn't quite get there. Okay.
Yep, it'll be there in the next couple of days, but we'll still in time for action at the December meeting.
Okay. Awesome. There were a couple other new true. There are a couple other new Troon updates. The biggest one with Policy 3118 was the, was the addition of the change in the definition of criminal sexual conduct. That went items of information, and there was a very slight change to Policy 4113 that just added a number on that page. So those two need to be voted on. Then there's a form that won't come to us, that'll just go right to administration. A long time coming, working on a policy regarding media center materials. It, this policy has gone through Kathy Kowalski, Claudia and Glenn worked on it with Academic We did a lot of edits at policy meeting, and now I have sent it on to Troon to try to turn it into an official policy, and we'll bring it back to policy after that. We discussed the, the school, the High School Social Justice Club has made a request to have land grant acknowledgement at, at meetings such as this and athletic events, as well as plaques in the schools. There's been discussion going on for over a year about that without any substantive additional work. It just feels very performative, and so the club is going to meet with an individual from the NOKMIS Learning Center after the MSAN conference, and Policy Committee will wait to see what, what comes of that. We've also continued to work on the renaming policy for items smaller than buildings, like trees and plants and benches and plaques. And Dory's gonna take the suggestions we got from Troon to the principals and see what adjustments should be made. And then our last item was, again, the 31AA grant funding. And then that was it.
Thank you, Trustee Edsel. ISOA, Trustee Taikaki?
Yes. So if you'll remember, we were invited to have an in-person meeting to tour the Beekman Center. Kath joined us, and I'm gonna give you a pretty big update on it, because it was a very impactful meeting for me. The Beekman Center, built in 1968, was the first of its kind. It was a world-class, standard-setting school to educate children and young adults with special needs. But with the exception of one roof replacement, it has not been renovated since it was built. When the ISD took it over a couple of years ago, there was black mold in every classroom. The tiling of the floor is still asbestos tiling. The pool is empty, because when they tried to fill it, the water left, and then the sewers backed up into the pool, so it's not safe. The classroom sizes are insufficient for the needs of our students that are there. And the way that Superintendent Melama put it was, you would not send this kid to, you would not send your kid to this school. And he was absolutely right. But the good stuff that we saw, we witnessed student drop off, all the buses arrive and all the students get dropped off simultaneously. The staff and educators that were there to greet all the students by name, and, and, according to each student's particular needs, was amazing to see. It reminded me of, of, you know, the vibes that I got watching drop off and pickup at our schools here in East Lansing. The school inside has like a Main Street USA setup and a, and an apartment, so that these students can practice skills for independent living, like how to cross the street, how to mail a letter to the, you know, in post office. There was an amazing sensory classroom, which, as we were just walking by, there was a student who was going in to use the sensory classroom. She walked right up to me, grabbed my hand, and took me into that classroom with her, and, and gave me like an immersive experience in this sensory classroom. It was so amazing. She had her educator play her favorite song. We, we slapped the mats in the beat to the song. We laid down and took a little rest, you know, and like centered ourselves. It was just incredible. And it made me really sad to watch the amazing, like, expertise and compassion and the conditions under which the administrative staff and teachers in the school are working under. In the coming months, the ISD is putting forth a bond proposal to build a brand-new facility on the same property, and to also renovate Hartwood School in Lansing that serves similar special need population. And I will be enthusiastically and emphatically advocating for East Lansing to approve that bond. And the reason behind it, for me, is simple, which is that our mission statement is nurturing each child and educating all students. And we have students that attend these schools that are East Lansing students, and they deserve the same, you know, level of care and resources that we gave all the other students in East Lansing when we built new elementary schools for them. Yeah. Our next meeting is on December 3rd.
Thank you.
If I could attack, attach, attach out to that. One of the, you know, it was like deja vu all over again, that as walking through that building, I felt like I was walking through Pinecrest of old or Donley of old. You know, they're built in the same time period, probably, probably more money went into Beekman than the others, but they, they, they're beyond their useful life. And it's like, there is no fix that's just gonna make this building do all of the things. And Hurtwood is probably a little newer and a little better shape, but it still is really problematic. Neither school has a safe or secure entry, and, and the, for those parents that do bring their children, it's not really a great drop off and pickup. So a lot of the same things that we've seen with our schools are problems in those schools. And, and so, yeah, I would absolutely support the bond. There's some, there's some problems getting, moving forward on the bond right at this point because of the shutdown. There are some steps in getting, getting going on fundraising for a yes committee that you can't do until you get approval, and that approval has to, you can't take any money until that approval has happened. And so there are some things being held up right now, but I've mentioned to the superintendent that I would greatly help with that bond. And I agree with Abby in that, it's like, these are, these are our kids, I mean, my daughter goes to Hurtwood. She is an East Lansing student. She just gets served in Hurtwood. And same thing with the kids at Beekman. They have little, outside of the classrooms, they have little, like, cards that just say which schools, the kid, which school districts the kids in that room are from. And so you go around the building, and you see that these kids are from every school district in our county. And so it's important that, you know, we do this for every kid in, in our county.
And every educator and staff member.
Yeah.
That deserves a nice building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A safe building. An educationally functional building, yeah. And a pool that's not disgusting.
Right.
Here, here. All right. The next item on the agenda is announcements. Our next meeting is December 8, 2025. There's no meeting Thanksgiving week, so I'll see you guys in December. And I think that should be our last meeting of the year, unless we have some cause to have an unscheduled meeting. So I guess prepare accordingly for that. Are there any, any other announcements? All right, we'll stand adjourned at 9:01. Thank you all for being here. Enjoy the rest of your night.